Are we good? Good evening all. I'd like to call the November 13th meeting of the Halls Brookline Cooperative School Board to order. I'd like to quickly just have everybody go around and say their name and role here so that the public knows who we are. It's my new tradition, sorry. It takes one second. Yes.
Cindy Van Conant, board member.
Mary Martin, student representative.
Krista Whalen, board member.
Linda Sherwood from the SAU.
Gina Burgslug, Assistant Superintendent.
Andy Corey, Superintendent.
Holly Babcock. Holly D'Arlo Babcock, sorry. Forget my own name sometimes. Board chair.
Tom Solon, board member.
Beth Williams, board member.
Tim Gerson, middle school principal. Rick Barnes, high school principal.
Amanda Zeller, high school assistant principal.
Thank you very much.
We're gonna start doing that. I think we need headsets.
Yeah, okay, sorry. We could do name tags, we could do something, but it struck me once that people don't even know. Because I, have you ever watched a meeting and you don't know who everybody is, so?
No, I don't know who everybody is.
Well, but sometimes I don't.
Sometimes we do.
Okay, well, you're perfect. I don't always know. Okay, so.
I don't have that one.
That's all set now. Appointment of the process, of a process observer? Is there anyone who'd like to volunteer for that? Tom, thank you. Great. We have a couple of agenda adjustments, like to move the program of studies discussion to go underneath or to be part of the principals report, right? Of Rick's principals report. And, do we need to vote on these agenda adjustments?
If nobody has a concern, no.
You have to see me on an objection.
Okay. And the second agenda adjustment would be to move the action regarding apportionment to the end of the meeting because we are expecting another board member and would like to be a part of that. So, it's, does anyone have any concerns or objections to those two changes? Right, seeing none. Let's move on to the minutes. So, we have a couple of amendments to the minutes, and I actually forgot the line number, Beth. I have to look at that.
Oh, I've got it.
Okay. That sent one out today, so.
Line forty-three.
Page seven, okay. Okay. All right, so, the amendments to the minutes are on page four, line thirty-three, course should be plural, courses. Page four, line thirty-nine, delete both before semester. And page seven, line forty-three, it should read, Principal Gerson has requested the District's Institute detention stipend to support staffing detention two days a week rather than to support student detentions. Was that the problem?
It just said stipends for students.
Right.
But I don't think that was, it wasn't his intention to pay students for detention.
Right. So, that's-
I even clarified that to make sure. I clarified.
Exactly. So, those are the three amendments. Are there any other amendments that people found in the minutes?
I asked first.
Okay. So, I need a motion to accept the minutes as amended by Beth and seconded by Tom. Hi, Tom. Okay, if there's any discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? I think we're six oh, oh, okay. Okay. We also had some non-public minutes from October 16th, 2019. We don't have any amended amendments on those. I need a motion to accept as presented.
So moved.
So moved by Cindy, seconded by Beth. Are there any comments? Okay, all in favor? Okay, six oh, one, okay.
Are you doing the little bit more, it's probably four o'clock?
No, not yet, because I, we just got them today.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna do those the next time. I didn't even have a chance to look at them. They came so late. Okay, nominations, resignations, retirements, and correspondence, Mr. Barnes.
Just the only thing, on behalf of the SAU, I just want to wish everybody at home and here at the meeting, we're quickly approaching Thanksgiving. I just want to wish everybody the best. And other than that, there is no correspondence, nominations, or resignations.
Excellent, great. Thank you. Okay, at this point, we are at public input. If there's anyone from the public who would like to make a statement regarding something on the agenda, this would be the time to do so. We ask that you keep your comments to one, to two minutes, and that prior to speaking, you state your name and address for the record. Okay. Seeing no public input, we will move on to the principals reports. And I would suggest, I guess we're gonna go with Mr. Barnes first, right? Or would you like to do it the other way around?
Nope, I'm happy to go first. So, I'm just gonna highlight a couple of items on my report. Are we waiting to do Program of Studies under deliberations?
No, we're gonna, we're gonna move it right with you.
Right with you.
Okay. I'll let Amanda, I'd like to introduce Amanda, our assistant principal. Let her start with Program of Studies, and I'll dive into the principals report.
So, what we put together is just a highlight of the major changes that we'd like to present, and then we can ask, have some questions after I kind of run through the list, if that's okay. One overall change is when the Program of Studies, at the top of the mathematics and the science sections, they both have a flow chart or a chart of some sort that shows a nine-through-twelve pathway through those content areas. And we're going to, where it's appropriate, include a similar kind of flow chart or pathway for other content areas. Things like world language, English, social studies. And we're looking at unified arts, but that, because it is so specific, may not, may not develop the way we want it to. But the others topics will show a nine-through-twelve pathway for all students in the same way that right now math and science do. The handout includes both of those examples. Math is a pretty strict chart. Science shows a little more give between each grade and more options, so we'll choose the format that's appropriate for the content. In science, we have three changes that we wanted to talk about. One is that the prerequisite to chemistry will be the completion of Algebra II or taking the course concurrent with Algebra II or running start Algebra II. This is based on teacher observations that some of the math involved in chemistry is challenging. And so, this will raise student and parent awareness to the challenge level of the math involved in chemistry, that Algebra II skills are pretty necessary in order to be truly successful, so that there's a full awareness of that level before students take the course. A big shift is the naming of our physics courses. Right now, we have AP Physics I and II, and then we have Physics, Conceptual Physics, and Principles and Problems. We'd like to shift this at the recommendation of our science department head to more accurately reflect the challenge level of physics and offer something in between an AP and then the, the standard offerings. So, what we'd like to propose is we'll have AP Physics I and II as we had before, then we'll have an honors physics for those who don't want to reach for AP but still want a significant challenge. And then we will have general physics, just as it is. There were some issues with the expectations of a physics that didn't involve any math at all, and that doesn't happen in physics. And so, we needed to be quite clear about our expectation with that science, that physics is truly a math-based science. And so, an idea, there was a misperception that one of our physics levels would be pretty much very simple and non-math. And while we have different levels of physics, we needed a true, clear picture of what kind of physics we teach. Anatomy and Physiology had previously been broken into semesters, but no one took it as one semester. Everyone took one and then two, so it didn't make any sense to make the scheduling revolve around semesterized courses that truly weren't semesters. So, we're just putting it back as a year-long course that, I don't think we have any outliers in that. All students who took Anatomy and Physiology I went on to take Anatomy and Physiology II, and they did it in semester one and semester two. So, that's just kind of calling out what we actually do and making it simpler in terms of scheduling. For Visual and Performing Arts, there are a few shifts in order to accommodate what we want for students, and that is access to electives, particularly our visual arts electives. What we found is that we had a bit of a bottleneck happening at fundamentals, since it was a prerequisite for many of our art courses, painting, drawing, ceramics, some of the graphic arts classes and digital photography. We needed to open up some pathways. Students weren't able to access those courses until almost their junior year sometimes because of how many fundamentals classes we were able to offer and how many students needed to take it in order to get to the upper or the secondary level art classes. So, now we've removed fundamentals as a prerequisite for digital photography, for ceramics, and for introduction to graphic arts. This was with, this was after conversation with our art teachers, and they felt that that made sense and was a workable classroom for those particular classes. It will remain a prerequisite for drawing and for painting, but what we've done to drawing and painting is instead of offering two separate courses, drawing one and drawing two, and painting one and painting two, as we like to offer, simply drawing and painting, they can be taken more than once, and they will be tailored to a two, two-course sequence based on the students. It will be more in-class differentiation. If you've taken drawing one, then what you will be held accountable for is a drawing two level of work. And if you've taken painting one, and you take painting again, then you'll get a painting two experience. We've had this with other classes. I believe we used it for Theater Workshop in the past. So, we've instituted this in a couple of places where we want to open up the section access, because what happens is we get tiny little sections that we can't run because there aren't enough students. So, if we combine drawing one and two and painting one and two, we can put more students in a classroom. The teachers feel they can very adequately differentiate one and two in the same room, and we can run more sections of those particular classes instead of having just tiny little sections, then we have to tell students, I'm sorry, we can't offer you that this year. So, this redesign of the, how the prerequisites line up and the fundamentals of art was to pretty much open up access for some of our art students. And if you've been around our halls, we have some pretty phenomenal art students. And so, we want to give them more opportunities to take electives that speak to their talents and their skills. I think that, oh, we made a few changes to Performing Arts, and that was to match improv and acting. One was a year-long course and one was a semester course. So, we've semesterized all of those, improv and acting. Theater Workshop will remain a year-long course, but like drawing and painting, it can be taken more than once with a different focus. There are three focus points for Theater Workshop, so a student could take the course twice and have different focus points for each year. The school counseling department, the only thing we've done there is we've changed our drop ad period to match what we actually practice. We had it as three days. Really, we need five for students to adjust schedules and have it not impact a transcript. And then for second semester, we just extended it to three days. So, that was just a practical application for, for nice transcripts for our students, and we need that much time to adjust schedules, we found. Top ten, language. To allow for possible decisions, we've just removed a sentence, is it one, two sentences, so that we can either put that sentence back in or leave it out and change it based on instructional practices, recommendations that might be forthcoming later this year. We're not, the timeline is a bit flexible there, but we didn't want to hedge ourselves in, in our Program of Studies next year in anticipation of just a discussion about that. So, the sentences at the end of the section that read, "It is the policy of the board to name the valedictorian, salutatorian, and those students who rank numbers three through ten alphabetically at the end of their senior year, and those students who rank one through ten at the end of their junior year. Please see Policy IKC for further details." So, that was just to leave us room to either say, yep, that's what we want, or to have a discussion around that without having issues when parents and students read the Program of Studies next year. Social studies. We decided to drop the contract for honors option. It was proving problematic in terms of having that differentiation in the classroom, in terms of having an extra project. It caused struggle and heartache and stress for students, and that's not what we wanted. We also had to consider that it was very difficult to be transparent about grading due to power school issues. It's not simple to have a section of students and then remove a small section and put them in another section to receive the honors credit, which you have to do through the system. So, there were just too many wiggly factors in it to make it feel secure and like a good experience for our students. We found more stress involved than good feelings about it. So, we'd like to drop that and have it back to a truly heterogeneous classroom for civics and economics, which would be really going on since we dropped the topics last year. So, now we're back to a class, which is nice during their junior year, which like during their freshman year, they get a class where they're with anyone, anyone in their grade instead of leveling and tracking, which is nice to see. Engineering. We see a nice shift towards a seven-through-twelve approach to engineering and our STEM offerings. And our new teacher, Devon Photo, took initiative to look at our robotics curriculum and realize it wasn't a nice intro to the other Project Lead the Way courses that we're offering. So, he designed a class based on robotics but moving to the next level called Engineering Technologies. And he did this in order to prepare students for the Project Lead the Way courses that follow it and to make sure that we weren't repeating the efforts in the curriculum in seventh and eighth grade, which robotics seemed to be doing that more than we were really aware. So, he took a good look at that and designed a course called Engineering Technology that we feel is better at that level at the high school than what we were offering before. Like chemistry, we've looked at the prerequisites for a particular course, Digital Engineering in this case, and there was a lot of algebra involved, so we want to reflect that in the Program of Studies by saying that Algebra II is really the level of math that's happening in this class, and so that would be a necessary skill to be either learning concurrently or have completed in order to truly feel successful in Digital Engineering. Computer Science has a similar change. What we were finding is that some of these engineering classes, students were struggling not knowing the mathematical expectations. This one is a little bit different. This isn't Algebra II for Computer Science Principles, but it is Algebra I or Algebra I and I and I B. That's just to raise awareness so that students aren't caught off guard by the level of mathematical reasoning, particularly algebra, in these classes. In English, again, it's another change that just reflects practice. We haven't run a world literature section in a couple of years. It doesn't seem to garner interest in students, and so we were just going to take it out of the Program of Studies. We have several English electives that are drawing student interest in ways that world literature just, it wasn't appealing to our students. They haven't signed up or wanted it. No one seems to have missed it for several years. I feel our other curriculum incorporates a world literature scope just by virtue of being English IX and English X. So, I don't think students were seeking it out as a separate elective. So, we were just gonna take that out of the Program of Studies to reflect what we've been doing year to year. I think that covers it, unless someone can find something I skipped over.
Oh, that's great.
Are there any questions or concerns?
I just have a question about, under the social studies section, it says that World Studies will once again become heterogeneous. Does that just mean there's no topics in World Studies?
Right. Okay. Right. Now, we're keeping AP World, because that one's not going anywhere.
To follow on with that topic, we're doing a lot of work on civics at the State House, so.
Right.
I just wanted to understand that you're dropping the civics and economics?
Just the honors.
Just the honors. Okay. But there is, these replacements are all, like, offered?
Right now, we offer civics and economics, but there's an honors option that students in those classes can elect for, but they're within the, the standard civics classroom that all juniors have to take, a semester of civics and a semester of economics. They just, this opting for an honors credit and thus a weighted grade with it was not proving successful for teachers and students to manage that well. So, everyone's gonna be taking plain old civics, plain old economics.
So, can I ask what wasn't manageable?
It was a separate project that the students did, and we often found that they were leaving that until the very end, and so the, the attempt to earn honors proved a big stressor right during the time of midterms or finals. And that's the last thing we wanted to do, was add this additional layer of stressful work. Plus, the teachers were trying to, what they found a lot is that the teachers didn't have time to give good feedback so that they could revise and rework something that really wasn't a part of their classwork. They had to do it independently. And so, waiting until the last minute meant the teacher couldn't give revision feedback, and so the student kind of had one chance to do this well, and it just wasn't working well for people involved. Didn't seem fair.
And it also, very few kids took advantage of it. It wasn't a large group of kids.
But it is supplemented by other things as well, so it's not, like, we're totally losing the civics aspect.
No, we still have civics.
Civics and economics, that's not going away.
Yeah. This was an additional project that they did outside of the class entirely.
Okay. Thank you.
This is not my question, but just to sort of have a discussion with Melanie and sort of, what this does, however, is it removes the ability for students who are GPA-focused to consider this class as one of the ones that'll help them get where they want to be. Do you have any concerns that it will discourage any of our students from taking the class?
I think it's a requirement.
It's a required class.
So, they don't get to, yeah, they don't get to choose. Yeah.
That is the required history for junior year.
Yeah.
Their social studies, is civics or economics.
Okay, so, my question was, what is the content of Algebra II that is viewed as necessary for the, the science classes where it's now gonna be made a prerequisite?
It'd be difficult for me to answer in very specific detail.
But, but just in general, what?
The level of reasoning and the way of balancing, I mean, chemistry teacher here, balancing equations and products and, and having to work different variables, some of that reaches the level of Algebra II. It extends beyond Algebra I. And so, students who didn't have a firm grasp or weren't learning those concepts were having to kind of learn it as they learned chemical equations. And having both of those things going at once was a lot to try and learn together. So, having a basis of some of the math going on in another classroom with another instructor or having been previously learned lessened the burden of the chemistry teacher to teach not only the chemical principles and concepts, but also the math involved to get there. And we had chemistry, junior year's a tough year. It is a really tough year for our kids. And so, when they got to chemistry, a lot of them didn't understand how tough that class was gonna be, along with, usually it's pre-calc at that stage for many of our juniors, plus this, this required civics and economics load. We just wanted to give a clear view of chemistry's tough. It's not, it's, it's not easy. And the math involved reached into Algebra II principles enough that students were learning both at the same time in a science classroom if they hadn't already taken Algebra II.
Right. What level of algebra do we require for graduation, if any?
I think students are required to have Algebra I.
Okay.
And we do, if you look at the, the science chart which I included here, we do have alternatives to plain chemistry. So, if a student is not feeling like their math is strong, we have choices.
I'm far enough removed from it that I don't remember the differentiation between Algebra I and Algebra II, so I was just sort of curious why that distinction was being made. The conceptual physics is that considered a, I won't call it intro, but a, an overview kind of class as opposed to, is that, I don't know whether that's a high-level class or a low-level class or?
The names of those two, Principles and Problems and Conceptual, was taken from the textbooks, and we really couldn't figure out the real difference.
Oh, does conceptual go with anatomy and physiology?
No.
No. Okay.
No, so we had three physics cla, well, four physics classes, but AP Physics.
Yeah.
Physics, conceptual, or conceptual physics.
Oh, I see.
And then physics, Principles and Problems.
So, I think-
Oh, it's writ, it's written, here it says anatomy and physiology physics, then it says conceptual physics.
Yeah, that should be over. It's just, it's a, it's a-
So, there's physics, conceptual.
It's a return that didn't happen.
And there's physics, principles, and problems?
On the chart, Amanda.
Oh, oh, okay, sorry.
On the chart, it says, yeah, there's a little-
Yeah, I see where he's looking. Yep.
Okay, so what are the, what are the two senior level classes?
The physics, it's conceptual and Principles and Problems.
Those are two distinct classes?
Yes.
Are they, is it choose one or the other, or are they complement?
No, it's choose one or the other. And what was happening is that a lot of students felt one, and students sat in front of me and said, everyone thought this was an easy class to take because it was the lowest level of physics, not understanding physics is physics. No matter how many ways you spin it, physics is physics, and you're gonna have to do some, some math to get through it. And so, there was frustration on students' part, just kind of misunderstanding that expectation.
I'm just sort of wondering why we need to differentiate those two, I just, why there's two classes?
Well, there won't be. In our new, in our new-
This isn't, this is the current, this is not the going forward?
The chart is the current.
This is the current.
Oh, okay.
And now, what's gonna happen is that we also were struggling with some kids who were taking AP Physics but really didn't, they wanted the AP challenge, but they were kind of borderline on whether AP Physics was really what they were reaching for. But if the option was this conceptual physics or Principles and Problems or AP, they went for AP. Honors will get some of those AP kids who really were just not quite at AP but still wanted a challenge into an honors class and leave the general physics for really just a general approach.
So, is the curriculum between regular physics and, and honors physics basically the same topics but just the intensity is different?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Do you have any other questions?
Not really.
So, honors physics will be weighted as long as we're waiting?
Yep.
So, that allows our students who want a weighted science-
Absolutely.
-to move into weighted honors physics.
Right.
And keep, and makes it, they're making like a little bit better choice for some of them, so they're not jumping into AP.
Right.
I got that, figured that out. Fundamentals of Art, so will photo, ceramics, and-
Digital photography.
Graphic design, digital photography.
Graphic design was not ever, it was kind of its own thing.
I know, yeah.
And we moved it, we have an art teacher who is willing to take it so that it could be an art credit, which it rightfully should be, but it's kind of its own thing.
That was my question.
Yeah.
So, those three will still, those three would be considered art credits?
Yep.
So, instead of having to take fundamentals in order to take those, you could walk in and take digital photo?
Yes.
Okay.
And there's two, there are two levels of digital photography. There's digital photo one and two. One would still be a prerequisite for two because that's fairly technical skill levels that are in those two, but there's no fundamentals prerequisite.
Got it. I have a student who's on a level-
But they still have to take fundamentals at some point. No?
No.
They have to take an art elective, and that doesn't have to be fundamentals.
So, they will no longer have to take, so fundamentals will no longer be the required art elective for students who want to get their art elective through art, so they can take-
Yes.
They have other options.
That's a very good way to say it.
I had, well, I don't think it was a good way to say it, but I have a student who took graphic design when it was considered an art credit, and then it wasn't, and now it will again.
Yes, because it is under an art teacher's supervision and teaching.
Right, got it. I get it.
Yes.
Okay, next question. Oh, I guess, Rick, you kind of said this, I am, so, we looked at the class sizes last month and noticed that honors by contract had less than like a dozen students, or maybe, maybe about a dozen students that were opting for it this year.
It's about consistent, yeah.
So, it's not just, there's some, obviously been some problems, but it's not a significantly popular choice for the amount of headaches that we were getting from it. And students who were in junior year can opt into an honors or AP level, an AP level history, they just would have to double up on history. So, they would have to choose, do we want to double up on science, or do I want to take art, or could I take A push? So, there's-
Right.
Yep.
Got it. Great. I don't have any other questions.
I think it looks good.
I think it looks very good.
Is this the, so, we're in the discussion about the courses studies, or is this?
This is it.
This is, okay. Can I do a general question?
I figured you would. I didn't think we were gonna get away that easy, Tom, I really.
And I apologize, I left, I left the papers specific to it in my car, but there is an extensive section on CTE programs.
Yes.
And some of those offerings seem pretty amazing. Has there, and this isn't directly part of the Program of Studies, but I don't know where else to have this conversation. How can we better link those to our curriculum and the offers in terms of both the, the knowledge that we have and are able to impart to our students about them? Because it's very hard looking at them to, to determine who, who it's appropriate for. And unless someone initiates a conversation to do it, my fear is we're, our students are missing out on a lot of opportunities because they just, it's inconvenient. So between the fact that they're not weighted comparatively with courses that we offer in-house and that it's a, not an easy thing to necessarily understand, I think that our students are foregoing classes that many of them would really benefit from taking.
So hopefully this will answer that. One, I don't know if you, we just recently had a career internship night, which was, you know, about 60 families or 60 people showed up to attend, which is huge for us for people to come out in those kinds of numbers. Doesn't sound like a lot of people, but that's, I don't know, 10 times the amount of people we would get for an evening like that. So there is an interest in the community. And through our Dr. Bro, our ELO coordinator, she was promoting that evening and it was really about the trades and internships. And so there was some connection to CTE there. Additionally, we've really, our partnership with Nashua in particular has grown, where they were at our open house this year with a booth set up so parents and families could learn about the programs. But we're also going to have them in in December to present to students, to freshmen and sophomore students, to explain to them the offerings. I'm not sure at this juncture if it's going to be selected students or if it's going to be all the students. As you probably know, if anytime I take away somebody's CAD block for presentation, it becomes, it gets pretty contentious. But something like this is important, especially at the younger grades, I feel like, for them to have some exposure and some level of knowledge of what is out there. Because I agree with you, there's so many amazing opportunities for students out there in that field that a lot of them just need kind of a knowledge of what it is.
Could I also add that there have been field trips planned with specific students who showed like a spark of an interest to those programs directly. So prior to enrollment, you know, course selection, our school counselors brought students.
Yeah, I'd like to say our school coun, our school counselors do a really nice job of, in their relationships with students, identifying and knowing which students kind of should be looking at that because they talk about that level of interest or they talk about where they think they'll be going. And so our counseling department works hard on a very individual basis with students to identify early enough in their process that this might be a goal for them and they work hard to set up a schedule that will accommodate it because it is a scheduling
Yeah.
issue. But the counselors go out of their way to set up schedules that will support any student who shows an interest. Like Gina said, there have been field trips and that was all through our counseling department because we had a significant number of students that the counselors felt, I think this is the right exploration point for these kids. So I credit our counselors a great deal with speaking to exactly what your concern is.
Well, it's part of it, but the, the other part is for the majority of our kids who we've determined are pre-college and looking at that, there are a number of these courses, particularly in the STEM area, which are probably more advanced and more rigorous than anything we offer in the school and are really good in terms of getting experiential training. The pre-engineering classes, some of the design classes and CAD classes are very high level classes and they are actual college credit classes. And I don't think that we're promoting them to our mainstream highest level STEM students and college-bound students. And at the, and I don't think we're weighting them properly. If we're going to be weighting and we could decide to continue weighting, I think some of these classes should be weighted as highly as our, any AP classes that we offer.
The only thing I would ask you to keep in mind is we can't control the weighting of another school. So that, while that may be, that's probably, that may be true. I mean, I might have some disagreement with some of that, but I can't control whether or not Nashua, or we can't control whether or not Nashua weighs or doesn't weigh.
We can control how we weight the grade they get, can't we?
No.
I mean, so if they get a grade in that class as an A, we can't determine how many points go to, towards their GPA?
No.
Who controls that?
The practice is to, the sending school, however they hold it, we, that's how we receive the credit.
So if they're going, if they're taking it at a, at a school that doesn't wait, then it, then it-
Or doesn't wait that class.
No, if it doesn't wait at all, let's say they-
But Nashua waits.
Does, does Melfry wait?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and all three of the, all three of the schools wait?
I'm pretty sure Alvin does. I've looked at, I just recently did a-
Most schools do wait.
Right.
And do you know whether or not they wait them?
Their CTE courses?
The, the engineering classes and things of that nature?
I do not know. I don't thi, I don't believe so, but I couldn't say that with a certainty. We don't wait our project lead the way courses where they can also get college credit at HB and doing things like CAD.
So, and that's a conversation for the waiting versus unwating committee. If the, if the committee were to come through to the IBC and say, we want to continue weighting, one of the things I've discovered in my research about weighting is that most, you know, like some states actually have like a weighting program where they unweight your GPA and then they reweight it and they are weighting dual enrollment classes. So those are parts of the conversations we can have. But at this point, we have to have that full conversation.
The other part of it is if, is it possible to get any additional descriptive information for those classes that might serve to identify target demographic, academic demographics?
When we put together the program of studies, the CTE is a difficult section to make sure it matches, but we try to use the language presented to us by the sending schools so that we are being honest and true to what they feel they are offering. If I, I wouldn't feel comfortable taking Nashua's wording for the course and targeting it. I think that happens in conversations with counselors. They look at the wording and they say this is, or they talk to other students who have taken those courses, but I don't feel like we could reword their course descriptions.
I wasn't saying rewording it, I didn't know if, if, like, almost like footnoting it.
Well, the other piece too is a lot of times, you remember, we're dealing with multiple different schools and just like our process takes the time that it takes, there'll be times when we don't have the information we need necessarily for a program of studies or we get it last minute just because, there could be any number of really legitimate reasons, but we're kind of at the mercy of the sending school. We've had situations where they've changed things at the last minute and all of a sudden it comes in, it's like, well, we've already done our program of studies, but we have to include their information, so we have to kind of go with what they give us too.
I also want to just put one other piece out there, because I don't think this is widely known by the community. We are limited with how many students we can send, not by our own district, but by the receiving schools. So we actually have more students applying than spots available. And that's not on us, so.
In that situation, does that allow us to, give us the freedom to bring some of those classes in internal?
No. Um, are you done?
Yep.
When you do course registration, I know that you have a link to the program of studies. Do you ever send the program of studies, the entire, just the PDF, to the families, to communities? It just, I, I feel like I constantly am in conversations with people and I'm saying, well, it's in the program of studies, it's in the program of studies. And I think the responsibility and the onus should be on the person to click on the link in the program of studies, but I feel like just maybe just a blast of like a link, you know, because I don't think people see it.
They sign off on it.
Do they sign, no, sign off on the student handbook?
One of the ones that we signed at the beginning.
No, you sign off on the student handbook, you don't sign off on that program of studies. And so many questions that you get, I'm sure you all get those questions, like, well, if I take this or that or what? If you, not a person who like, like, this is like my thing, like I literally will read the whole thing, but a lot of people don't, so.
It's easy enough to send the link and I'm pretty sure we have it. If we didn't last year, I'm sure we have in the past. It's not, it's not a hard thing to do.
Yeah, I just think it's just, but that would answer some of the, because that's part of what is, at Tom, at your core is basically, are kids aware of this stuff and are parents aware of this, you know?
Aware and fully informed.
Mm-hmm, okay. Are there any other questions, anybody else?
No, I like it, thank you.
Great job.
Thanks.
Thank you. So what, what will happen with this now, next month, it'll come to us for a vote?
Come in.
Okay, great. So if there are any questions or comments, now would be the time. We'll be voting on it next week.
If there are, if there are questions that come up-
Come up?
Between now and the next meeting, how would you like them handled? Do you want it to be funneled through you?
No.
You just send me, send them to me.
I think you can reach out to the principal and get-
Yeah, okay.
Get information, you know, that'd be great. Okay. Thank you, Amanda. I think that you're released to the, to your life.
Till tomorrow morning.
To the cold. Make sure you bundle up because it's really warm in here and it's not warm out there.
Yeah.
Thanks, Amanda, thank you, great job.
So just to highlight a couple of things in my report, and again, I'm happy to take any questions, I'm not going to read it, but there are instructional practice committee update, we, some committees have been meeting, those conversations have been interesting and productive, but we're moving, you know, at least with the top 10 committee, working to get something back to the steering committee so we can make a presentation for a December board meeting. That's our hope at this point, we'll see how that goes, but that's kind of the timeline we've set for ourself. Let's see, we had Breathe New Hampshire come in today and do a great job with their presentation on vaping. Another item on here is that just really want to drive home and take a moment for all of us to pat ourselves on the back. The CTE vans have been a huge, huge hit. Very, very positive, kids are so happy. It's kind of sad, actually, when I get comments, I'm just so happy I get to go to my class more, or I'm so glad, happy that I don't have to miss half my class. So really pleased with how that's turned out and we're able to get kids to their courses that they already sacrificed so much time away from school, we're able to get them more, there more frequently and around some really crazy scheduling issues that goes on between all the schools. So those, that's been a really big positive piece. Students have been great with the CAD lock feedback and that's all I have. And again, happy to take any questions.
Any questions on the board on any of that?
Just want to commend Rick, he's played an amazing role as facilitator and, and referee.
Thank you. It's been good work.
There's a lot of conversations that are going on, which hopefully will be going on throughout the community as well.
Absolutely.
It's terrific. Okay, I think because we're still in the high school, I don't want to put you on the spot, student council rep, but do you have something you'd like to share? Don't feel like you have to?
We don't have anything else we'd like to share. As you know, we had our Veterans Day assembly, which is an important part of our school community and the community as a whole. So that's pretty much our only event we had recently.
Thank you. And just quickly, did you want to do Brian's report? Do we want to do anything with that or is it just here?
It's here, yeah, so obviously a very tremendous season in athletics wrapped up with several teams that won the championships at the middle school and you have multiple teams, sorry, coach. It's right here.
The high school update, Rick, focus on the high school.
Tim will dive into it. The other piece is we have multiple teams at the high school, stick with the high school. Also progressing the tournament, we have our football team in the semifinals this weekend, which I think is the only second time in the history of the program at Bo with a, what I would say a very legitimate shot to win the whole thing. It's exciting and girls soccer was right there and you have the rest of the items there. So we have several coaching openings, so it's again, very busy time in the high school world of athletics.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to, any questions on that? Tim?
Thanks, Holly. Again, I'll highlight just a couple of points here in my principal's report. The first one, last time we met, we talked about the SEL program and how the district-wide committee has done a tremendous amount of work and has passed off some of that work to the building levels. And just to highlight some of the things that have gone on in just in the last month in relation to social emotional learning, we had a week-long kindness week, we got a HB United week. We had various activities going on through our ROC curriculum, including holiday cards to service men and women around the, around the globe. We did a mix it up lunch day, we had compliments day, hot apple cider for teachers, which was part of student council and partnership with special ed. So just in highlighting some of the work that we do on an everyday basis and weaving in our social emotional learning, not just into a specific week per se, but throughout our various curricula, particularly ROC, I just wanted to highlight some of those things. We had our red ribbon week, which is an annual event, just at the end of October, and highlighting drug and alcohol awareness and prevention. We had a variety of different activities. We sent a group of student leaders off to CAST for our Youth Empowerment Summit. And we had some fundraising activities, which included a day where they got to tape the principal to the wall in the cafeteria to-
Heard about that.
Raise, yes.
It's sports, it's sport.
I'm embracing the middle school principal mentality. It was a lot of fun, actually, it was probably the best part of my day. And there were pictures too, yeah, there was evidence of such, so.
I don't see it on your report.
It is, it's right, it's, you can, it's there, you can see it.
Did they use red duct tape?
Ah, it was red duct tape, yep, there was all kinds of duct tape.
That's Tim back there, see, you taped it to the wall.
So that, it raised money for a, a great cause, Child, Children's Resiliency Retreat, which the money goes towards children grades one through eight affected by a level one substance use disorder. So obviously a, a great cause and apparently it was such a popular event, we're gonna, we're gonna beef it up next year and maybe have a bigger venue for-
You can't take too many of you to the walls.
That's right, that's true, yes, there's only one of me, so. The, I wanted to update everyone on our personnel. We, Mrs. Courtney Moore, she has gone out on maternity leave, healthy mom and baby, and a grade eight science long-term sub has been hired. We're very fortunate to hire Mrs. Kira Yurel, who will be taking her place for the remainder of the school year in grade eight science. And you can read her credentials there. And then we have an upcoming winter concert for our both seventh and eighth grade students on December 10th. And I would welcome any questions on the report or anyone?
So the team DaVinci went on this emergency awareness and preparedness field show.
Ah, yeah.
So my question is, will the, I'm, I'm forget, is DaVinci's sixth grade, seventh, eighth grade?
Eighth grade, yep.
Eighth grade. So will Bartlett be able to do that too?
Yep, and it's, I think actually, December, I think it's the first or second week of December.
So it'll both be eighth grades?
Yep, yep, it's, it goes, so Erin White, who is the health teacher, she orchestrates the event for the team that she's working with at the moment. So she was instrumental in the, in the whole, the whole day in organizing all the various activities. So the eighth graders do it as part of, essentially it's, it's through the health curriculum that they do first aid safety training. The day itself incorporates a lot of other safety areas too, so.
Awesome. Any other questions, comments? I think it's great that you've highlighted, I mean, these are obviously great events for the kids, but it's so important for the public who are listening to know how much work the middle school does on social emotional learning, drug and alcohol awareness, all of the things that really will resonate with them as they go through high school.
Yeah.
So I appreciate that and appreciate the focus on that.
Absolutely, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, great, sorry.
Want to talk about middle school sports though?
Oh, yeah.
I do want to talk about middle school sports. So, I mean, no, so highlighting our fall season, we had two tri-county champions, our girls soccer team upset the one seed and gave them their only loss of the season and took home the Division Two championship. Our volleyball, girls volleyball team took home the Division One championship, went undefeated on the season. Not just the championships, but we had several other teams take part in playoffs and finish with very respectable seasons as far as win-loss. But overall, the fall was certainly a good experience for, again, a very high number of participants in our athletics programs. Winter sports are off to a good start, which was early, I was, I guess I didn't recognize how quickly we turn it right back around and there's practices immediately going on.
Just look out the window and you know it's winter.
Yeah, I know, you know, it's always around Thanksgiving that I've been familiar with the winter sports season starting, but it pretty much starts right up after the fall season. So we have all of our winter sports underway and I believe their games are starting in the coming week, I think. We have some basketball games scheduled, so, yeah.
Great.
Have a great fall season.
Thank you so much and congratulations to those successful teams, but also congratulations to those teams who may not have had the success that they wanted because life is, we learn a lot from life and when we don't get exactly what we want, so. All right. That is good. I guess we're up to, are we, wait, did we, oh, facilities, wow, because we went out of order, so now I'm confused. Facilities committee update, that would be Superintendent Corey.
Yeah, I just wanted to provide you with an update on the athletic field. This week they're installing the fencing around the field. Early next week they'll be back to do the final paving of the road and parking area up top. up top and the turf field company is doing their finishing touches. We'll have Teagan Barn back probably next week to create what I'll call the whole punch list of the final things and we should be wrapping it up sometime to the end of next week as long as the weather continues to cooperate. And then next month, we will give you an accounting from a budget standpoint, but right now, the only overage we had was the ledge that we had talked about a few months back. Everything else has come in on budget and on time.
Great, that's good news. Are there any questions or comments on the turf field update? The facilities update, I should say. Does it, do you have any other facilities updates besides the fields?
Not this time.
No, okay, just checking. You never know. That's great news, though, that's terrific and I'm looking forward to actually seeing it. I walked up there and it looks great, but, all right. Aportement joint meeting update. Is that me? Yes, that's me.
You might have to move that to the end.
Well, I think we're going to deliberate at the end. We could probably do a discussion now or we could move the whole thing to the end.
Do we want to deliberate and discuss?
Yeah, so, okay, that's great, okay. So we will do that at the end. Budget committee update.
Okay. In your board packet, you had two documents that I think you're very familiar with, hopefully by this time. One is the Excel spreadsheet, which is basically an overview of the entire budget. I'm going to just work off the very last page of that right now, just to highlight a couple of things. In FY20, we had an operating budget of $23,282,955. We have done three rounds of the budget so far, working with the budget committee and we are at FY21 after round three, $23,518,463, which is a difference of $235,508, which is 1.01%, so we're a little over 1% in the operating budget from last year. And then we'll have warrant articles for the HESA contract, annual contingency article, our annual athletic trust, our annual special ed trust, and our annual SAU trust. One of the things I want to highlight tonight is through discussions with the budget committee, we're looking at maintenance trust a little differently. As you know, our buildings are starting to age and we have a number of things coming up, so what we have decided to do is to significantly increase the maintenance trust and use money out of the FY20 budget to fund that through the budget surplus. So we might give a little less back to the taxpayers, but at the same time, we'll be able to start to catch up on our maintenance issues and not load them into the budget. So when you see the operating budget being a little lower and the maintenance trust being a little higher, it's kind of just an offset, but we really feel that's the way to approach it because things like Rick has brought up the paving that needs to take place, we have another section of roof, we have a small section of roof here at the middle school, a small section of paving at the middle school, and we believe over the next two or three years, if we move forward with this concept and the voters support that, that we really can catch up on our maintenance issues, which typically happen whenever you go through a period where budgets were difficult and tight, that's what gets taken out. So we're just trying to catch up on those. So if all of those were passed, right now the maintenance trust would stand at $310,000. That would bring the total increase for this year, if all the warrant articles were passed, to $583,538, which is a 2.39% increase if everything were to pass. And we still have another round or two to go. Tim and Rick are going to the budget committee this month, they'll go through their high school and middle school proposals and go over their priorities. And then Kelly and I will join the budget committee again in December and kind of do what we call round four, which is typically the final major round, there are some adjustments after that, but nothing significant at that point historically. In terms of the other document in your board packet, we continue to use the different rounds of the budgets so that you can follow right across what started out, which is round one, which is basically the principals request, everything they can think of, plus five other things that they know I will cut, just so they can make it a little further along.
It's always part of the game.
It is, it is. And it's kind of a fun game when I get to read through some of it, but I'm really excited because we're at round three and we have a lot of what I'll call significant items that are still in the budget. We are advocating for a .2 French teacher in both buildings. We really feel that for that program to continue to expand, we need to get that piece of personnel in both buildings. We still have the requested stipends that we talked about last month. At this time, we still have the four what I'll call shared positions, but I will tell you, I don't envision all four of those shared positions making it through the budget. The number one priority is the shared nurse. We feel that's essential to do all the services across the different district and meet the needs of students.
Why did that number go down?
The.
Why did the shared position go down from?
Because what happens is we go through the budget, Kelly further refines what percentage will belong to each district. In terms of the textbook.
Do we have a .8 French teacher and we want to add them to full time?
No, we have, typically we've been covering one section, extra section at the high school, but we've been using what I'll call salary differential. So Gina moves on, we replace Gina with a new person that's, has a lower salary, Rick utilizes that money, but as the budget continues to get more restricted and tighter, we feel we just need to actually put that money in the budget. Now, we're going out to advertise, we're not sure if we will find a .2, in this case it would be .4 because it'd be a section at the middle school and the high school, but we feel that's the best way to at least start the process.
So .2 is one class?
Correct.
So you need one class at the high school and one, so you're really going to hire a .4?
Correct. If everything works out.
I got you.
Or what we may do is it gives us the money that if, if Tim had, one of his foreign language teachers was interested in picking up an extra section and giving up their prep period, we'd have the stipend to provide them with that compensation.
Just a question, I don't want to open a can of worms, but would this potentially help us with AP French?
It could because we seem to be going in every other year's cycle and I think that's kind of started at the middle school, you know, so in some ways, Tim's hire is probably more positive for the program overall because Rick is presently uses his department head to pick up that extra section, so we can limp along like that. So if we could only get one person for one section, I would probably start with Tim's group, which would grow our AP numbers, which may ultimately require us to fill that to a full-time position.
So we need a French teacher to teach, that wants to teach two classes in two different buildings?
Correct. Great retirement job for somebody.
Talk to all my French friends.
Under textbooks, workbooks, workbook rotation, I'm very pleased to say that Rick's initial request has actually grown because we were able to go back and look at some different things. So you'll see there some items for piano repair, a French horn, a band riser and a choral riser. I'm not sure if they'll all make it through, but they've all made it into the budget, which is always a good starting point for us. And then Tim has his graphing calculators in there, he's using a phased approach so that we're never buying a whole set at once, so that the whole set doesn't go defunct at once either. Then we have the new computer equipment plan, the only item, the computer science computers, Rich Raymond is working with that department head because we believe we can buy a very similar piece of equipment to Lenovo and get just bang for our buck because we'd be buying the whole purchase to Lenovo, so they're looking at that, so that number might change. Tim has requests for Chromebooks, which are still there. Then we have our annual rotation of staff laptops in both buildings. One of the items again that I'd call your attention to is, we spoke about it briefly last month, Windows 10 under House Bill 1612, computer must be able to run Windows 10 and we have some computers that simply can't do that. We have handed them down over the years, so they might have been originally in a computer lab, then moved to a classroom, then moved to a library, then moved to strictly word processing, but now some of those need to be replaced. So we see in both buildings, the number of computers that they need replaced under that. And then we have our shared services and software, nothing new there, it's just a firewall and a couple switches. At the high school, we have phase two of cameras plus a performing arts winch. We really struggle with our theater program because we are constantly moving things up and down from the ceiling and we're always dependent on somebody else or rental of the machine, so having this would allow us to do a lot more. We presently have some field hockey, soccer scoreboard, ice machine and carbon volleyball pole system. Again, I'm not sure all of those will make it through the budget, like I'll use the soccer scoreboard. Our intent is to play probably almost every home soccer game on the new field, which will have the new scoreboard, so I'm not sure if we need to replace the scoreboard on the present soccer field. I think it would be a very rare occasion that we'd be playing a game there and so there are discussions like that going on. Volleyball poles at the middle school are in very good shape, the issue is that they are just heavy, physically heavy and every day the kids have to move those and set them up. The carbon ones in the budget are similar to what they have at the high school, which is much lighter, so it's, I'm not sure if it'll make it through the budget, but that's why it's in there.
Do you want to do an extra weightlifting?
Well, yes, but I don't want somebody to drop it on their foot and then spend 10 times the amount it would have cost me for a new set of poles on the hospital bill. And then the facilities maintenance, a number of the items that you see that have gone to zero are because they were moved into the maintenance trust by design. So, you know, we have a ways to go, we're, I'm really happy to say.
So all those things that was your?
All the red stuff.
All the red things.
All the shaded pieces.
Do you not have shaded?
Okay, shaded, yep, not red.
Yep, so all of those have gone into the maintenance trust. We kept, what I'll say, both buildings need an intercom because again, they're over 20 years old, so those are essential, so those would stay in the operating budget. So if it's still in the operating budget, it's because we believe it's essential and needs to be purchased at this time. And then we will be asking the budget committee for relief from guidance from the Windows 10 issue because we wouldn't necessarily be buying $40,000 worth of replacement computers if it wasn't a result of the new law. We would stick with our normal CIP plan for technology, but the, this is, push this forward. And then the other piece, just so you're aware, as you know, we encountered some asbestos in the middle school when we did some of our work this summer, so that has been put into the maintenance trust to get, to simply take that out, not just encapsulate it, but remove it. So for the middle of November, we're very happy where the budget is. The other budgets are moving along. The SAU budget subcommittee meets this coming Friday and they will be making their final recommendation and will be bringing that SAU budget in December to the SAU board for the public hearing. And I'd be happy to take any questions or any items.
First of all, I think it was mentioned that there's been preliminary guidance from the budget committee. Do you know what that number is?
I believe it's $23,011,000 and some change and it was preliminary because when we started to do guidance, they did not want to do guidance on the salaries because those salaries were already approved by the voters, so they're already getting that increase, so they didn't want to use the multiplier on the salaries. But what the budget committee needed to do was go back and extract the administrative salaries because those are not per CBA, all the tweeters and those pieces, so that's why we're still at preliminary guidance. I believe we'll see that number move up a little bit, is my guess.
So they're using the 23?
Eleven.
Eleven, and this is currently at 23.5?
Correct.
So you're talking about a 1% difference maybe?
Correct, yep. And I think if, if the HB 1612 is approved as well, that would be outside of guidance. And the reason why I think we're maybe a little closer at this point than we have been in the past, we have some special education costs that will be going away, so on the non-guidance side, you're looking at about a half a million dollar reduction. So I think that's why we're a little closer than I would normally have us at this point.
Okay, so the guidance on that stuff was probably low, but we're offsetting it by being ahead of the game on the non-guidance portions?
Correct.
So we don't include special education in the guidance numbers?
No, it's not, the budget formula recognizes that special education is a required cost, and we have no choice in that matter. So if a new student moved in and that student was going to be $100,000, it's the way we balance, not, I'll say steal from regular ed to fund that new cost. So special education is not within guidance.
Do you, do you get the sense that the budget committee is okay with that trade-off, that they're more bottom line or targeted?
They have never been, I'll say bottom line. I think during my time, it's been a, it's been a dialogue and what they're truly looking for is justification of why, so the years when we're brought in, like last year, an 8% budget, it wasn't, you know, necessarily, we weren't all thrilled by it, but the justification was there. And I think when we look at this year's budget, we're looking at bringing in a, I'll say, a very lean budget, but you'll notice we're still getting what we need. So I'm not sitting here with a bunch of things that I would say are programmatic that I'm cutting. And that's why I highlight the textbooks, because if you went back a few years ago, we might have asked Rick to reduce textbooks or cut some textbooks, that's not the case and we're getting potentially his phase one of computers, so there are a lot of, I'll say, academic components that I'm very pleased with in this budget.
I'm just, I'm just kind of curious whether you anticipate that the budget committee is going to want to take that bundle of things that are within guidance and get them aligned with guidance despite the fact that, that you've got offsetting savings?
Well.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I, I kind of look at it that.
I know how you look at it, I'm wondering how they're going to look at it because if, if what you say is true, and I think it is, it's reflected, they say, the reason they take it out is they don't have control, but the things that they do have control over and they're applying guidance, if you were to look at that section of, of the round three budget and strip away the non-guidance items, where is the budget compared to their, their guidance? Because the number that, I think Cindy shared it with me.
We were at point, we were at point eight.
Right, right.
That was what, what it was, once they took everything out. Darlene was changing things and they haven't sent out the minutes yet, so we don't have, I don't have the final.
But do you have any guess where, where the budget is relative to guidance on those?
About, about 1%.
We were 600 and some thousand different originally, but now you've cut since then, I mean, it's, it's, it's a, you know, live document.
So proportionally, it's not monumentally different.
No, I'm going to say about 1% and I know Brian's sitting here and I know he was in the discussion, I'm not going to ask him, but like, we didn't not set guidance because we didn't, we were worried about the number, we didn't set it because we had some unknowns and what Darlene wanted Kelly to do is, like, health insurance went 4.1. So traditionally, they'll look at that number different than the guidance number, which was a multiplier of 2%. When you take out their teachers' wages that were already approved, the multiplier became .7.
Okay.
So overall, it's a CPI increase of about 2%, but you take out your contracts and you're at .7.
Okay. Has there been any willingness to consider the really big maintenance items of the roof and the paving that are capital improvements that'll last 10 to 15 years in bonding them as under one bond?
We actually, a few years ago, I'll use the roof as example, made the decision not to go with one roof replacement with one bond because what we've found is historically, roofs never break down all at the same time.
But you don't have to spend, I mean, the, the interest rates are really low. We're, we've got a project to be doing some of these things in phases, so I'm just looking at, there's been a desire in the past to take things that are, have a long life and distribute the payment on those things over a long life as well. And the, the option of, of bonding it suits that thought process really well, especially where we've got a small number that add up to a big enough amount that'd be worth bonding. If you're getting bonds in the three and change. If you're getting bonds in the three and change range, even if it sits, a portion of that sits in the bank for 24 months, you're, the cost of having that money is relatively low.
Right. I, I do know that one of the Hollis Budget Committee members brought that up in relation to the whole budget, because money was cheap. So I have no problem bringing that back to them and kind of looking at that, because we do have, I'll say, even more significant sections of roofing coming up in the next few years. Like, this year's section's about $50,000 or $60,000. That typically we have done through the operating budget, but I think it's either next year or the year after we get to about $120,000 for a section of the roof.
I, I think it's an easier sell to have a bond for specific things than it is to have a big contribution to a maintenance trust, too.
Well, the, well, the discussion was around the maintenance trusts coming from the surplus, so that you weren't asking people for money, you were just, like, right now, when Linda gave her projection, say, last month, I think we were about $350,000.
You mean, we'd elect to put it in this year?
Right, at the annual meeting, okay? Just like all the articles we would approve.
No, no, I, I thought you were saying, because don't, don't, does the trust have to be funded only through meeting?
Through meeting.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So traditionally, we've been doing $75,000.
No, I, I know that. I thought you were talking about potentially us just saying at the end of this year, just taking, taking it and putting it in like we do for, essentially encumbering it.
Right. Well, you could always, towards the end of this year, decide you want to just pay for a portion of the roof with the monies in the budget, because it is a bottom-line budget. But that would be, you know, a presentation by me and a board vote on that. So you could accomplish the thing, either one. The nice part about the trust to me is it continues over. So if all of a sudden the roofers went up there and said, "Well, you really don't need to do this section of the whole thing," that money just sits in the trust until we allocate it for a specific purpose.
But that's like a bond versus a city. Anyway.
So can, but can you create a bond? And don't you have to have a specific-
Yeah, we have, we would have specific items. So we've got, we've got the roof, and we've got paving. Those two together is over, over a million dollars between the two schools.
Could you propose a bond?
You could.
And, wait, but, and, I don't know if I'm giving, so you put a bond on the warrant article, on the warrant, and it doesn't pass, can you still fund the maintenance trust?
You could have then a fallback like we do. If this, if such and such isn't approved, then you fund it through the next one article. And if you do, if it is, then it gets passed, then it gets passed over.
Yeah, and I honestly, in terms of this year, where we have the, the dollar amount coming off from non-guidance, I'm not sure if it's the best strategy. But I think it's the, it's not necessarily a bad time to have, start having discussion, because we do have some major issues coming up, because overall, the co-op debt ratio is very low.
I would be concerned if we tried to put through a bond this year. I don't think we have enough time to really do that. But, but I think it would be a great conversation to start having for future years.
Just to give you an example, last year in Hollis, we approved about $60,000 that was used for an architect, engineers to come in. And Hollis is building a bond, you know, a variety of projects that they wanted done, and they're going to put them all into one bond. Now, I don't know if the voters will approve it or not, but it was a strategy to really give us a comprehensive look at our buildings, because we discovered things that, as educators, we would never necessarily realize. And I'll give you an example. There's a device called an air handler. They sit on the roof. The air handler number three at Hollis Upper School is probably within two years of its useful life. I mention that one, because that's a $260,000 item that our custodians don't necessarily look at. As educators, we don't look at, and that's one of the big reasons why we're at, you know, I'm really hoping the voters will approve the SAU budget with a facilities director in there, because I think in some regards, that position could pay for itself through the regular maintenance procedures.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
So at this point, you go back to the Budget Committee with some of our comments, right?
Yep, yep.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. All right, so we will move forward to deliberations. And wait, I think it looks like, are we supposed to look at the, the schedule, the calendar? It's not on the agenda, but I have it in the, um-
I have it as-
I have it as an outline, is it?
No, it says right here, it says-
Oh, it is, right, so, okay, I'm sorry. So the first motion I need is to approve the dates, snow dates, of March 17, 2020, March 18, 2020, and March 19, 2020, for the Hollis Brookline Cooperative District Annual Meeting and with a start time of 6:30 PM. Need a motion?
So moved.
By Melanie. Need a second?
Second.
Krista?
Where are these dates?
They're right there.
Which ones are they?
The dates are these, these in purple. The dates that are in purple on your, if you have a colored screen, they're in purple on your document, I believe. Is there any comments or questions on this?
I'm just assuming that, that this meshes with all the other meetings going on.
Yes, and it's been discussed with the Brookline, Brookline Town and the Hollis Town as well.
Does that make us the last meeting?
I believe we are this year. And we rotate that on a gentleman's agreement with the Brookline Town.
And it means we all have to wear green. Sorry.
Sorry, I just, in the motion, did you also have the public hearing date?
I did not. I only have the, the dates for the meeting. Do I need to put the public hearing in the motion as well?
Once you set the date for the meeting, the public hearing is governed by the meeting date.
So as long as we set the date, then we're good?
Yep.
Must be had by date, but it-
Right, so it would mean that, although this isn't part of the motion, that if we hold the meeting on the 17th of March, the public hearing date is the one in yellow, right? So it would be, we would have to have the public meeting date by February 5th. That's the last possible day we can have it. And then petition-
It's snow date.
With a snow date. So the snow date is the actual last date, right? Okay. And then we have, obviously, we've lined this all up so that we can get petition warrant articles in at the right time, so that they're in a timely manner, and they don't have to go on after, right?
Correct.
Okay, terrific. So that's all good? Does anyone else see anything that they have questions on this whole document? We're voting on the dates, but the dates drive the document, so.
So the only one that we're irrevocably fixing at this point is the actual meeting date, correct?
Right. Everything else is dependent on that date. Okay, all in favor? Six, right? There were no opposed, right? Six oh, great. Okay, so we need to bring to the floor the, I need a motion to amend policy IMBC, Alternative Credit Options, on the first page by inserting, "Appeals can be brought to an academic review committee and accept the second reading as amended." Is there anyone who'd like to make that motion?
So moved.
Tom, seconded by Beth, thank you. So this is our second reading of this policy. In the first reading, I accidentally removed this sentence. And so I wanted to bring it back, because we talked about having an academic review committee, but it's not in the document if it's not there. So that is pretty much where we are with this, with this policy. And as you know, we've changed it to remove, it was previously changed during the first reading, to remove the eight maximum and to, you know, make sure that we are compliant with all laws and such.
So right now, it pretty much is, is open to the principal's management of, of accepting of alternative credit, approving courses, is that correct?
There's nothing in policy that prevents a student from taking, you know, a certain number of them, so that's what we've done, but we have left it to the principal or his designee or her designee.
So it happens at the building level?
Happens at the building level. And then if, for some reason, the building principal were to say not approve a course, the student would be, as long as the student does all the things that are laid out here, the student would be able to appeal that, and that would be brought to an academic review committee, which would probably be some form of a building level.
Yes. Wasn't there, I'm sorry, wasn't there wording that said what the makeup is of the, somewhere of the?
No, we have left that out.
No, we've left that out. It's not anywhere? I do not believe that it is.
I think the idea was that it depended on what it was that was being appealed.
Right.
Because if you're appealing a decision related to science, you'd have a science department chair involved, whereas if it was related to art, you might not have the science department chair involved.
Correct. No, but I'm just saying, is it, is it strictly administrative in order, or staff?
It will, it will be administrative and staff. It's generally small.
But it's not defined in the policy.
Is it defined anywhere?
No.
Can it be?
So, I don't remember, Holly, so, one of the policies, Rick, we looked at had a defined committee, but there was a concern, actually, for a couple of reasons. Student privacy was, was the major concern.
Yeah, that's right.
And it involved a parent and a board member. And we had to remove the board member in case the appeal went beyond the committee. And then the parent, we had to, like, it was a different parent, we had to remove-
Or like a community member.
Community member.
You can't have, because of student privacy.
Yeah. So the other members, and I don't remember if it was, I don't think it was this policy itself. I think it was another one, many of them refer to an academic review committee. It was simply an administrator, probably school counselor, and like a department head, based on what it was.
It's typically a department head.
Okay. I'm sorry, I got distracted.
Well, if you want it to be administrated, building administration and staff, then I would put that in. And at this point, I mean, when I look at it, I didn't know if it would have a student representative on it.
Well, it couldn't, because a student would be involved in-
Involved in a decision.
-decision for another student, right? But a student, because of privacy issues, can't be involved in a decision regarding other students.
And I'm reluctant to-
Well, they have them in terms of, of, there are a lot of student review boards in many schools that don't violate privacy. I'm not saying it should be. I'm saying this is so ambiguous that-
So what we could do is we could go, since the second reading, we can go back to policy, and it's not, wouldn't be in our determination, but we could have a conversation about-
Procedures?
Procedures that would maybe be reflected in the student handbook that could then relate to what an academic review committee could possibly be made up of. But it lends itself to some flexibility, I think is what we're looking for.
Well, what I'm saying, if I'm a student, if I'm a student and I look at this and you've said no, and it doesn't say what the, what the review committee is, I'm going to lobby for having potentially other people, maybe even people outside the school on that committee who might, for instance, let's say I'm taking it from another institution.
Yeah, I got you.
Yep.
So we should protect ourselves, yeah, I got you. So we can look at that, but we, I think we'd like it to not be in policy, but instead be in procedures.
Okay, in that, in which case, the procedure will need to be referenced.
We need to be referenced, reference, like, as per the student handbook or something like that, right? Or wherever we put it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably the program of studies, so I think would be more appropriate. Yeah, we can talk about it again next month, too.
So I'll make a note of that, and I hope that's reflected in the minutes, because I use the minutes for the policy committee.
Hear that, Dawn?
Yes. So we need to look at defining the academic review committee.
Somewhere.
Somewhere. And if, if we could put it in policy if we'd like to, but we'll look at that. All right, so can we, Melanie, sorry.
No, that's okay.
You've got to like stand up and shake your head.
Question on this. Have any students utilized this yet? Have we been able to use it?
Yes. No, I mean, in terms of alter, what, are you talking about all?
Alternative credit options is the policy we're talking about?
Yes, every day.
Besides the gymnastics, like?
No, but through the V-Lax. I mean, there's a number of credit, alternative credits students pursue. Typically, it will be V-Lax, but it's not exclusive.
And how are they approved?
They're approved through the school council. They fill out a form, a request form through school counseling, and then that form gets approved by an administrator.
And so it fits another program other than V-Lax, though?
Same process.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions? Okay, so can we go on the second reading? All in favor? Did we ever do that?
Yeah.
Yep, Tom made a vote in.
But we didn't vote. That's what we did. We made the motion, but we never voted.
We have a discussion.
Okay. All in favor? Six oh, right, we were talking about it. That's what I thought. Okay. Just hit me when I do it wrong, because, okay. So now we have to accept the second reading of policy IHBH, Extended Learning Opportunities. I need a motion? Thank you by Tom, seconded by Beth, thank you. So, again, go straight to discussion, right? And, Melanie, did you have a question on this one?
Well, I have a comment, a medical error, but I think we're missing a two, T-O, on the third to the last paragraph. So extended learning opportunities may be limited to per school year.
Oh, it should be limited to two.
T-O.
Two-two, okay. Okay, so put a two before the two. I don't have them in front of me to doctor them, so.
What has changed from reading one to reading two?
We haven't changed anything, have we? No, that's what, it's, it's the same as what we brought forward in the first read.
Do you recall if there are any open issues or discussions?
No, we didn't have any open issues or discussions. That's why we didn't change anything. We brought it back to policy and read through the minutes, and there wasn't anything. I mean, it's basically this policy and the next one that we're going to look at are all connected to the first one, the alternative credit options. And what we had to do with all of them was remove any language that indicated there was a maximum. So that's what we did. So it's a consistent, consistent across the three policies that we're looking at tonight regarding alternative credit options, which can be extended learning opportunities. And they also can be the next policy we'll talk about, which is online internet-based education. So that's why there's not a lot of changes, because it's really just the one change that we needed to do. And then, two, we do have a maximum of extended learning opportunities here, but that's because they're different, right? We do have a maximum here. Extended learning opportunities may be limited to per school year and six maximum in a high school career.
May.
But there may, that's what it is. We may limit them, that's right. Thank you, help, thank you. And that was the change we made last time.
And I will just point out that it does also refer, refer to the academic review committee, so whatever you decide to do-
Right. We have to do it in there. So that's why we can't waive the third, because we need to make the same change at that point, and probably in the next one, too. So are there any other comments or questions on this? All in favor of second reading? Six oh, great, thank you. All right, so I need a motion to accept the second reading of policy IMBA, Online Internet-Based Education.
So moved.
So moved by Tom, seconded by Melanie. Again, I believe there's a reference to the academic review committee in here. If there isn't, maybe there needs to be, I don't know. But again, the only changes that were made were the same changes. They were, there were no changes made between first and second reading. But yes, the academic review committee is in the first paragraph. So again, we don't want to pass this one. I feel like all three of these just have to be done at the same time.
I'm just sort of curious. I see the, the edit from, moving from there to his/her.
That's me.
I'm wondering if you really want to do that in today's climate?
I understand that, but I'm sorry, the grammar just makes me, so yes, yes. There, yeah. I've, yeah, we changed it to his/her, because it's his or her.
What about non-binary? I understand that, but it's, it's, it's bringing it to my attention.
Right.
Okay. Let's do it consciously, that's all.
Okay. We'll talk about it in- Okay. We'll talk about it in policy also, because we could change.
Every single policy.
Yeah, we'd have to go back and change so much policy.
Like all of them.
Like all of them.
Find, replace.
Hmm?
Find, replace, control.
Right.
Are any of the, the building administrators or other administrators aware of concerns or sensitivities to the issue in policy?
I am, no one has made me aware as it pertains to policy.
I've, I've heard nothing. Any thoughts?
About the him, his.
Well, it's his, her. So it's, it's supposed to be addressing both, or all.
I will have to say, I think that moving to a there would be more tolerant.
Okay.
But if, if it hasn't been brought up, I don't know. It's necessary to change.
It's certainly a potential thing that we could change as we work on policy. It's an easy enough fix. It's easy, we could do it with these three policies this time. I would not suggest us going through all the policies and making those changes. But every time we come across one, we can make that change. I mean, we could be consistent. That's just my feeling. I don't have to win on that, I don't.
Well, I think it would be virtually impossible for us to go through.
Right, right, right. But as we're going through each one, we can make that change. I, I don't have a problem with that. In the meantime, can we vote on this one?
First, second reading.
First, second reading. All those in favor? Great. Okay, so, next one. We have a motion to accept first reading of policy K F, Community Use of School Facilities as Presented. And this, go ahead. So I have a motion, Tom, seconded, second, please. Cindy. Let me pull this one up, please. Just one second. So, we were, this was brought to us, this is our first reading of this policy. We wanted to look at this because of the new field. And I mean, primarily, that is the main reason, the main driver. We've made some changes, just in basic things. Facility use permits are available at the school district's central office. That's not actually in practice, so we just made a blanket statement that approvals will be issued to an adult only. We have a little bit of an exception for inclement weather. We removed the language referring to specific other organizations, because all of that language can be found in our current fee schedule. But we have asked our principals, building principals, and their, I guess, administrative assistants, and the athletic director, and the athletic coordinator, to form a committee to take a look at that fee schedule, because it has not been updated in a while, and it needs some overhauling and some looking. So we're bringing this to the board today for first read, but not intending to bring it to second read for at least, I would say, not until January, possibly February. We want to give the building principals an opportunity to look at that. However, we do realize that there is a timeline fast approaching where we need to have that kind of all tied up in a neat little bow because of the field. Are any questions? Any other comments? Anybody? Did I get that?
Yep.
Did I cover it?
Yep.
Is there any kind of a template available on this from N H S B A? I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering if you might want to cross-check with it in case there might be other updates that are worth.
Okay.
Addressing.
No problem. Okay, so all in favor? Six oh. Okay. Last policy. We need to, I need a motion to accept the first reading of policy, is that I I B, Class Size as Presented.
So moved.
So moved by Tom, seconded by Cindy. This, actually, I think it even says that we would be reviewing and evaluating this annually by the school administration, and I think that we thought it would be a good time to bring it to the board. The only change we're suggesting is a change in visual art for some reasons. One, that we're struggling at the middle school to get under twenty, whether you say that's an accurate statement at times. And we feel like the art classes could range between fifteen and twenty-five. I think Amanda referenced some issues with the fundamentals of art and getting those prereqs in and not being able to get all the kids that we need to get fundamentals in, so they're not getting, they're not able to get into the drawing and painting classes that they would want. So we're basically giving a little bit more flexibility. We still have a target for all of our classes to be around twenty students. So we're still targeting for twenty, but we're giving ourselves a little bit more flexibility in terms of the class size when we present the class size list. Any questions on that? Discussion?
That'll be more relevant now with the changes to the program of studies.
I think so. Yes, Tom?
Do we have any space or facilities limitations for those classes that would, that would get?
The art room is a big one.
Yeah, I mean, it's not really for the fundamentals, because we can probably go more than twenty, but the digital photography depends. Painting tends to be a little bit smaller.
I'm not, I'm not advocating that we make the policy dependent on the facilities. I'm thinking more the other way around, since we're budgeting. If we're considering doing all of this, do we need to spend some money in preparation for bigger classes?
I think one of the constraints was when we had a darkroom.
Right.
And we don't, we no longer have that offering.
Just turn the lights off.
The other.
Does that anyways have the power?
The other piece, just if you take a look strictly at the middle school, mathematically, it becomes impossible if you have a class that's larger than two hundred, perfectly split between the two teams.
With one, with one teacher teaching five sections.
There's just no way to mathematically make it happen.
Thank you, that's what I knew.
Mathematically, it's not going to be possible.
And which, which course is the re?
For visual art.
Oh, just for visual art.
In the middle school.
Yes, sorry.
So are you wanting to put a number on it, or is it just?
No, we're just removing it, because now it just goes into the top class size, shall have a minimum of fifteen and a maximum. So it goes into the general class size, is no longer considered an exception.
That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
No, that's fine.
I would ask, I am asking, that you think about whether or not AP courses still need to be exempt from the, the default class size.
So we can bring that back to policy and talk about it?
Yeah.
And if you have further comment on that, I think you probably could send an email, like, you know, if you had some thoughts on that, or you could share them now.
Just basically, I, I've heard more of our concerns about too big than too small for many of our AP classes. And where we're starting to get, in my opinion, some AP bloke. If, if they're under-enrolled, I'd like us to consider whether it's the best use of our resources, especially where now we've got Project Leadway, we've got some incredible programs. If, if they're not popular, I don't think that the student population would be harmed by moving them into other opportunities.
The only caveat to that would be if we continue to wait and we're doing something like a top ten, and now I don't have a weighted elective or a weighted course to take, it might disadvantage potentially.
But I'm saying we have so many classes that are weighted. We have a lot of APs. If, if a particular class, I'm not, I'm not necessarily advocating that, that we get rid of the class.
Okay.
But if it's under-enrolled, I think, I want you to have a mechanism to say it's under-enrolled, it's against policy. We've always had the liberty to make an exception, and we have done so on, on certain classes. And if it's fourteen, and you say, I got thirteen or fourteen that are enrolled, but as you know, quite often, especially when something is under-enrolled, by the time it actually comes to be, it's even more under-enrolled.
Sometimes.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that Principal Barnes has done a really good job specifically looking at the French. A lot of times, the enrollment in AP French is seven, eight. Do you run it, do you not? And, and pretty much every other year, the choice is we don't run it. Sometimes there's another offering, so if you're looking for an AP science class, there are a couple AP science offerings, so maybe, maybe AP chemistry isn't for you, we're not going to be able to run it, but you might be equally qualified for an AP physics class, something to that effect. It's, it's a challenge with French, because you've dedicated your oral language learning to French, and you can't slide into.
That's covered separately as a capstone class.
But, but even, I mean, the language here doesn't make it so that he has to run an AP class.
Right.
If it's under fifteen. It says he can, that they can be run. So I think that they may be run. So this is not saying you have to run it, because we've obviously not run AP French, and it's, it follows two of those things.
I understand, but I, I would like to go.
I think the policy gives you the flexibility.
I would like to actually go the other way, which is to make it, make it policy to, make it the exception when it goes under fifteen. That, that's my personal preference, so.
Got it. Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to weigh in on that?
Well, I was, I was agreeing with Holly. I feel like it does give that option. I don't think it requires it, but, but it gives the option. But I, I, I don't know, I hesitate to cut back on our AP classes. I hesitate to have those available to kids and those opportunities available.
I guess the question I have is what, what truly is the opportunity? Is it simply the opportunity to get a weighted grade? Or are we now saying, because there are other, other opportunities that give more benefit to the students in terms of credits, in terms of background. Some of the AP classes now, their curriculum is being cut back and being restricted. College Board's playing a lot of games with, with their program at elements.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, but we're a smaller school, and I think this.
What's the opportunity that I'm asking?
Right, and that's why I think we already have, as a smaller school, more of the limited offerings of AP courses. And, and I don't, I'm not just talking about offering the AP to the top students. I think the AP classes are being offered, giving kids an opportunity to try college-level courses and giving them a taste of it. I think that's what leads to so much success that we have in our school. So I, I don't want us to get into the habit of, because we have a year or semester, a semester, a year, where it might be a little, the door is locked.
Does someone want to open the door for Liz? Yeah, that'd be great.
Is that your question?
Go ahead, Krista.
I just would hesitate.
Put your microphone behind you, Krista, sorry.
I, I understand, and so I'm, I just asked, can you, we asked a question, and sometimes just asking a question triggers a thought process. When we, when we picked these numbers, it was a number of years ago. And in light of discussions that are happening, ongoing in the IPC, as well as changing curriculum and course offerings that we now have in our schools, is that still an imperative that we run small AP classes?
I would say it depends.
I really think it's so dependent, and I think what, I mean, we can bring this back to policy, and we'll talk more about it in policy, but I feel like this gives us, gives the principal, the opportunity, and the administration to say, this is an AP class, and it falls under this category. And so I don't want to see us feeling like we have to fight in the other direction. I'd rather see us maybe say, we only have six kids, and this isn't worth running this year, versus, I think this gives us an opportunity to make sure that we're always looking at those AP classes that could possibly be smaller. And I hear what you're saying, Tom, but I think we always have to keep in mind that I don't think that our, all of our students take AP courses just because of the weight. I think they take them because they're truly, some of them are truly interested in the subject matter that is being taught, and the level of which it's being taught, how it's being taught, and a lot of times, by whom it's being taught. So I think that's a big determining factor, why kids are choosing AP, not just because it's weighted.
I, I, I hear you. I asked you to look at, look at the AP curriculum and stuff, and talk to the teachers who are teaching it.
Yep.
The AP curriculum is dictated. I think we do a better job teaching to our students' needs when they're not constrained by someone else's curriculum.
Great. Thank you. We will put this into policy, have a little more of a conversation about it, back to policy. Can we take a vote on this for first reading? All in favor? Seven oh. Great, thank you. I think we've gotten through all the policy work. Now we are at the apportionment.
Everything.
So do we bring the motion to the floor and then talk, discuss it? Is that how we do this?
Originally, we had broken to.
We need the hard copies of those.
Originally, we had a discussion before deliberations, but I think you still have the liberty if you think that would be.
I would actually like to just start with a discussion and not make, because I feel like we could end up amending this motion four times. So I'd like to bring the topic to the, just to discuss the topic, and then, Andy, can you turn, yeah, can you hand those out? So, for the, you got it. So for the public, we were able to meet, have a joint meeting with the. Can I have them too?
Got another one, Andy?
We were able to have a joint meeting with the Budget Committee on November seventh to talk about how to best approach the apportionment formula. As many of you may know, we are hitting the five-year marker for apportionment, meaning that on January twelfth, twenty, twenty, we will be at five years, right?
Yep.
Is that right? Is that what, that's the year and everything? Wow. Okay. So, we talked about what changes we could make, because legally, in order to reset the five years, to trigger that five-year holding period, we would need to make a change to the formula. And we had an interesting discussion with many of the BudCon members. I think we had five members of the Budget Committee there. Four members of the Budget Committee.
Five.
Five. Oh, Cindy's, right. And, and six members of the Board. And we went through a variety of different scenarios, but ultimately, the Budget Committee took a vote on a recommendation to recommend that we can, we use the formula ninety-five, five on the operating budget. So the operating budget would be a portioned ninety-five percent based on ADM, and five percent based on equalized value. And the capital cost of the district would be a portioned a hundred percent on equalized value. And we would add a dollar to the assessed portion, to Hollis's assessed portion prior to apportionment. Sorry, I'm not Darlene. Like, I am so not Darlene. So that was the recommendation that they voted on. And at this point, we've taken this to council to make sure that a change of that nature, if it were to be presented to the voters at a special meeting and passed by the voters, would that change in fact reset the, reposed is what they call it. And the, our council has expressed some concerns with that, not overwhelming concerns, but, you know, as with everything, there's a potential for litigation. And I thought we could open this up for a broader discussion and see what the Board would like to do and what the Board would like to vote on.
I think you, the BudCon, it was a three, two?
Three, two vote, thank you.
Okay, vote for that. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yes, you're right. It was a three, two vote from the Budget Committee to recommend this change. And the Board, the school Board did not take a vote at that meeting. The school Board would be taking a vote at this meeting. The School Board would be taking a vote at this meeting. So I'm going to open it up to the floor of the Board and see if there's any comments or how you guys would like to proceed with this, given the legal opinion. That is in front of you, do you need a minute to read it?
Well, I mean, I see what Jim is saying. And I think one of the things, the conclusions we, a lot of us came to within that workshop was that we felt that this was, the formula we have now appears to be working. And we kind of wanted to send a message that we were happy with it, but at the same time, bring it to the voters to have an opportunity to make amendments and change and, and express their views because that, that's giving them that opportunity. And we wanted to take, we wanted to be able to research and take control of the situation and therefore have a special meeting in January in order to do that because otherwise it would take over our annual meeting and it would take over our annual meeting. And I do think this is an opportunity we want to bring to the voters to have the discussion. And just like we did five years ago, we brought forward a formula and it was amended, three times before we got back to the original.
Three attempts to amend it.
Right. And so it, I have to say, almost don't know if it matters what formula we bring forward. Even if it's a slight change to a ninety-six, four, or ninety-four, six. I think it will get amended and it will be discussed, each one of those amendments. And I think it's just, to me, this is an opportunity to bring this to the voters, to open up the discussion so that we can set a formula for the next five years and continue doing our business with a formula that the taxpayers would like to have. But it, it is putting it in a process so that we don't have to keep doing this every single year, bringing it forward. And not to mention our business department, our business office. So that, that's my thought. So I see what Jim is saying. So if a dollar isn't what we're trying to do, our point was that we were happy with this and we were just trying to say, let's bring forward something with a small change and then see what the voters bring forward. We can change it in a different percentage wise or I would support a small change.
So if I remember right, one of the amendments that was brought up five years ago was to basically take it back to what had had been before.
Was a hundred percent.
Was a hundred percent ADM. And one of the reasons that people went to the podium to speak against going back to a hundred percent ADM is that this won't lock it, we'll be sitting, we'll be back here next year doing the same conversation. And one of the, you know, sentiments of that meeting, I think, coming out of it was, we wanted this to be behind us for five years, that there was a real effort, I think, in that room to lock in a formula that was workable, not liked by both sides or both communities, but workable to both communities. And when that was a suggestion to go back to a hundred percent ADM, it was, well, we don't want to do that because otherwise we'll be doing this same battle again next year. I mean, I've read the legal opinion and I, it, it strikes me as, so what? If some, I mean, there, this is not a, this is not an issue where there's damages from somebody who challenges it. What's the worst thing that happens if there's a legal challenge to the passing of the formula that suggested? The following year, we bring it to a warrant again, you know, we, we, we have a year.
We just go through this process again.
We go through the process again. Oh, we have the opportunity as a school board to form a committee, to do a study, to get it ready in order to be, you know, discussed at the next annual meeting or at the one-year mark. I don't see that, you know, what is the, what is the downside? The upside is that we can lock a formula in for five years and we can have at least five years where this district can move forward and worry about something other than apportionment. The downside here, the risk, really seems pretty small. And I, you know, so I just, I'm not sure that a legal opinion, which says, I think, the obvious, we discussed it at the, at the joint meeting, that there's at least some litigation risk if we make this small change, is a reason to necessarily not move in this, in the direction. We acknowledge there could be a litigation risk, but I think you're right. I think there's going to be all kinds of formulas probably discussed at the meeting, if we hold it in January. And I don't know what's going to pass. But whatever passes, if it is different than what we have now, it will lock it in for that five years. The other thing we have sort of going in our favor is that proposed legislation that we thought was going to pass this year, which would have allowed a vote in favor of keeping the same thing, to have that same five-year repose. Maybe we get lucky and that gets passed in the next year. And so, you know, moving this out even one year works in our favor. I don't know what's going to happen, but maybe Melanie can work her magic.
No, I don't have magic, I thought I did, but just an update on the RSA and the bill that was, was not. It was passed in the House and ITL'd in the Senate. The Senate rules are, if it's ITL'd in the Senate, it cannot be brought back the next year. So we can't bring it back. We can bring it back in twenty twenty, but not, well, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty-one, but we can't bring it back in twenty twenty.
Okay, so we need to boot it two years, not one.
And then there's the issue of will, will people support it? Will senators support it? So I ran into that issue as well, that there was, were senators who saw it from the perspective of a town who wanted to try to change their warrant articles but couldn't.
Change their, their formula.
So the apportionment, yeah, but couldn't because.
It wasn't law.
Yeah, because it was law.
And I, I so appreciate that, I'm not going to, but the issue is that for our communities, and I don't know if it's true for all co-ops in New Hampshire, but in our community, when apportionment comes up, it becomes a very divisive topic. And it, it paralyzes the community in terms of moving forward with anything for the co-op. And so that's the challenge and the reason to try and, as a co-op school board member, what's best for the kids is a stable environment where we can continue to work on budgets and teachers' contracts and things like that.
Anything other than apportionment.
Right, I feel like our responsibility as a school board is to, to keep that kind of, that level, calm level, so that we can move forward through the stuff that really impacts kids. This doesn't impact our kids, it impacts, you know, how the money is, how the taxes are divided, so.
It impacts the kids, but in a really negative.
Right, it impacts them negatively, right. And I definitely would like to see this occur at a special meeting because I think the people in the community that really care about this issue need to have the time to really dig into it and talk about it. And I think if we put it in a regular meeting, there, it'll be on the list of things and it won't get the attention that it, that so many people want to give it. And it'll give us an opportunity to hear, although negatively at times, but also positively, some things that we need to hear. And I do want to point out that at the last meeting, there were, when this meeting was in January of twenty fifteen, there were a thousand and twenty-three votes on, on the, in the secret ballot box. I don't believe we've had a meeting that large, except for possibly two or three years, three years ago when we did the turf field. But I think a thousand votes is a lot. So I do believe that people will come out to this meeting. I know people will come out to this meeting because it will be all over social media. And I, I don't love this plus a dollar, but I really do feel like this formula is a, it was a shift from a hundred percent ADM. It moved in a direction that it needed to move, which was fair to Brookline in some ways. But people in Hollis don't always feel that way. And so I feel like it was a movement and it's worked and there haven't been significant concerns. And if we can do it with plus a dollar, I'm all for it.
I stand by the conversation last week as well. I mean, we want to get it out so that the public can discuss it. We could sit here and come up with a hundred different formulas and when we walk in that room, somebody else is going to come up with something different. I'm in agreement with you, I'm like thrilled with the dollar, but we do like the formula that we have and that seemed, was the way that we thought that, that we could send that message. And as far as the legal opinion, I could have probably wrote that myself. I don't think it really helped the decision.
I think that's one thing that was stated, I'll let you talk in a second, Melanie, but that we wanted, the Bud, Budget Committee member who recommended this pointed out that the apportionment formula is really complicated to explain, to go over, to review. And anything that we do to make it more complicated just requires that much more education. And the plus a dollar is a very symbolic thing of saying, the formula exists the way it, we feel like it should and we're just, it's plus a dollar, it's like a symbolic move. So, go ahead, Melanie, sorry.
Well, first of all, I think it's really important that we make sure that we get as many people out to vote as possible. I, the co-op is very important to our communities. I'm concerned about the dollar. I think it's, it is very symbolic and, and just that. And I think if we went with a percentage, even if it was a small percentage, it says more than, than just a dollar. So.
But what do you, what do you mean, it says something more? What are you trying to say?
I think it's, I think that you're trying to, to me, saying adding a dollar makes it more debatable, makes more possible amendments to come up. If you offer something, and it doesn't have to be a great deal because we basically like the formula.
Right, so offering the same thing.
Many people like the formula, but not all people like the formula.
Well, and I think.
I think therein lies the problem. There are some folks in both communities that are not going to support anything other than a hundred percent EV or a hundred percent ADM. I think that's kind of the two extremes. And we're never going to be able to make those extremes happy or they're not going to be agreeable.
They're not going to vote yes.
They're not going to vote yes to anything other than the formula that they perceive to be fair. But we got sixty-some percent of the voters to show up to that meeting at an odd time of year that were willing to say, we're willing to vote for a compromise. And I think that's really important. And I think, I think the dollar really is symbolic. And Melanie, I think the reason it's symbolic and the reason why we want to go with something symbolic is, I think a number of us on this Board would say, if we could just put the formula we have up for a vote, for five years, we would do that. I know I would. And Krista's shaking her head. Cindy, we're all like, yeah, if we could just do this again, we would. And any shift in any direction, meaning pro-Hollis or pro-Brookline, is going to open up the floodgates. And what it's going to open up is it's going to open up those people who are stratified on these two sides. And what I don't want to do is be in a position where we were five years ago, where we had a movement in Hollis to dissolve the co-op. Because that's what small token percentages does. It fires up people who are really kind of backed off of this issue politically, right? They, they're not concerned about it because they're okay with the compromise. So going forward with the dollar is symbolic. It says, as a Board, as a Budget Committee, at least at this point, we still support the compromise and we don't want to start pulling one direction or another. In, because we want to keep this community together in one, you know, high school and one middle school and one co-op. Because the co-op is more important than a few dollars either direction.
Because we went through it all. You know, this was the formula we came forward with last time? And then the first one that was, it was amended to fifty ADM, fifty EV? And the whole discussion ensued about it, pros, cons, everyone, and we voted, it got voted down. Then I think it came up a hundred ADM.
No, seventy-five, twenty-five was that.
Seventy-five, seventy-five ADM, twenty-five?
Seventy-five percent on ADM, twenty-five to EV.
Okay.
That was the, it had been prior to the hundred percent ADM.
Okay, that was back, okay.
Two steps back.
So then we went through all that, discussed it, didn't work. Then we got to a hundred ADM, went through all the discussion. I mean, an hour probably on each one of these, I would say, that we spent. Went through all the discussion, got to this one. And, and, and that's when I feel like everyone went, okay, like this is the compromise. And that's where we came, that's where we got to the sixty-something percent that we got to vote for this one. And I did, I feel like it was a compromise. I feel like it was a work to try to say, okay, the schools are in Hollis, so we'll take some of that and the ADM will take some of that off of Brooklines. But I mean, it, I feel like it was a compromise for all of us. So that's, that was the way we looked at it. So that's why I look at it not as being, anyone's trying to shove this down anyone's throat. It's, we think it's good, but let's open it up to the taxpayers to have the discussion. Maybe someone's going to come up with an amazing formula that we're all going to go, wow, I've never thought of that, that looks fantastic. Don't, I don't know, you know, I'm not, and, and that could be. But we have to present something. And Liz is right, presenting anything, we change it too much, either way, I feel like we're opening doors to.
Just let me piggyback on that. No matter what we do, we're going to open doors to some sort of controversy. But just to go back to that night, for those of you who may not have been there, the fifty-fifty amendment that was suggested was fifty percent based on average daily membership, fifty percent based on equalized value. That was not carried by a card vote and not counted, meaning that the vote was so clearly a no that we didn't even count the cards. The seventy-five, twenty-five was, was also not carried by a card vote, but we did count the votes and it was six fifty-five no, two fifty-five yes. So we actually counted those cards. The last attempt for the hundred percent ADM amendment also was not carried by a card vote and again, not counted, meaning that there was, it was so clear. So the, the voters that night, which was five years ago, and it was different to voters and all that, came out very clearly to support the cooperative school district, the co-op. And so it's pretty clear to me that as a community, I feel like in the last five years, under the direction of the current administration and superintendent, we've gotten closer as a community and more connected as a community. I feel like families are sending their kids to Hollis Brookline Junior Cavalier Soccer, Hollis Brookline Cal Ripken, Hollis Brookline, everything's Hollis Brookline. I don't know if it was like that five years ago. So I feel like the support for the co-op will, is there. And I think that the voters will come out and want to see that this school board has said, yeah, we, we like what we've been doing for the last five years and we like where we're going and this has worked. And the plus one dollar is symbolic, like when you buy a piece of land, you know, when a town sells a piece of land to a school district for a dollar. That's what it seems like to me. Sorry, Tom.
My view is that the, the reason that the apportionment formula that was brought forth was, the one that was ultimately passed is that it was brought forth by the school board as a work product of the committee, not because of the numbers that it represented. And that the people who showed up, showed up to vote, I think they were supportive of the co-op in general. And they are at the point where they were saying, I'm not going to let someone's last-minute numbers erase what, a year's worth of work by people from both committees. So I, I don't want people to underestimate the importance of what number we bring forth. It may not have as much gravitas as, as did one that had a year-long committee, but especially if you're bringing it forward, piggybacking on that work and making that statement, that's the power of the statement, it's got absolutely nothing to do with the math. The reason for changing it would be if we as a, as a committee think that there is some fundamental inequity in the formulation, that five years of experience leads us to believe we should try to rectify. believe we should try to rectify, then I think we should make that attempt to rectify it, knowing full well that there are strong believers in both extremes and really good cases that could be made for it all. And it's either going to be done on a personal logic level or just a sheer emotional level. But if, picking the number that we have here is simply one of trying to ride the coattails of the committee. I'm not saying that's bad, but I don't want people to feel that the numbers are there because there was, excuse me, the approval was there because people actually agreed that that's the right number. Does that make any sense to anybody?
And my other, my other thought to that is, the numbers in terms of ADM and in terms of EV haven't changed for five years. I mean, we're still at about 50-50 ADM, and we're still at about 70-30 EV.
The situation's very similar to almost five years ago. And it's likely to be that way for the next five years, too.
We're not seeing a major shift that would make us want to re-look at the formula.
That was my thinking, right.
We're at the same kind of population numbers and the same property valuation numbers. So, I mean, we can call a vote, and if we move forward with this and we're not unanimous, are we okay with that?
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
But if anyone is concerned about, if they would be inclined to support it, other than the concern for the possibility that someone will come out of the woodwork and challenge it, I sort of defer to Liz in the statement she made, in that unless you make a, one could be upset if we only changed it a half a percent. I mean, we don't know what the threshold is at which someone would say, yes, it's a substantive change, or no, it's not a substantive change. And the lawyers don't know either. It's not even up to them. It's up to some judge or jury, or however it would be decided. But the fact of the matter is that the RSA has been written in a way that if we do want to continue, there's no other option.
And it gets put to a vote, a legislative body. The people of the community get to decide. We don't make this decision. We're just making the decision to put this out there and to do it in a proactive way, where we, as a school board, are saying, it's time to look at this. We have to look at it every, you know, we want to look at it, and we're okay with where it is.
I think we're following the spirit of the law, which is, is that at a five-year interval, the community comes out and makes a positive affirmation.
And that's the point, which, as I was driving from my dinner over here, I kept thinking about, how does this look if you have to litigate it? And my guess is that this meeting's going to look a whole lot like what you just read the minutes of. There's going to be three different amendments thrown on the table, they're going to be voted down, there's going to be this lengthy conversation, and then it's good chance that this proposal will get passed. If that's what happens and that's what gets litigated, I think the judge is going to say exactly what you just said. The spirit of the statute is that the community is going to address this through the vote of the legislative body, at least on a five, every five years, and it looks like the community did that. And the thing that keeps resonating in my mind is like, you know, what is, what, you know, what is, like, what is consideration? I mean, it's a mere peppercorn under the law. I mean, I think this dollar is kind of that. It's symbolic, it's a mere peppercorn, but I think if it goes along with that debate that we all think is going to happen in January, I don't think a judge is going to have a problem with it, because it follows the letter of the law. And I think it follows the spirit of the law as well.
I just had a quick question. With the legal counsel that we sought this week, just curious, I know it had come up in the joint meeting about the stabilization with years. Did that come up at all with legal counsel? I know that's not what the recommendation was, but I just see across the state, there's some of that for the three years, you know, with the ADM, the average, I'm sorry, I shouldn't say stabilization, the average of the ADM.
I didn't address that with legal, because it wasn't the question that was asked. You know, obviously, that constitutes a change.
It does, and it's just something, you know, a dollar, I wasn't a fan last week, I'm still not a fan, and again, it's a personal preference, it's a perception, but to me, the, you know, the averaging is a way that leaves percentages, as is, that gets presented to the voters, we have the conversations, we have, you know, it's going to happen regardless of what we vote for tonight, I agree with that. But I was just curious about that, because just looking across it, it's something I was seeing, and I wasn't sure, because it does constitute a change in my mind, I just wasn't sure.
I don't think that they doubt that that constitutes a change. And what we're discussing, because some board members weren't there, if we took the average over a longer period of time for ADM, that would probably reduce any spikes, because if you average something over three years or five years, it's going to reduce those spikes that could change it drastically.
It's important, though, when you've looked at those numbers, to realize that the impact was less favorable for Brookline in that situation.
I think that it was.
Because Brookline, and especially with the projections we even see, this steadily decreasing just a little bit every year, and so if you do the average, you're going to be kind of slowing down that decrease. Thank you, I'm not good at numbers, you people need to help me with numbers.
It does, and I agree with that part completely. I was just curious, you know, because it may come up, and it's something I'm seeing in different areas, just curious.
And it just, we need to be careful of who it impacts and that kind of thing. Yes, Melanie?
So just to summarize, it sounds like we're affirming that we had a good apportionment formula, that we believed in that formula, that it was highly supported five years ago, and we're making that change of adding a dollar to support the RSAs. And when we have our meeting, there may be amendments that come up, and we will vote on those amendments.
Absolutely.
But it will be the consensus of the body.
I think it may be an overstatement to say that it's a good number. I think the fair statement is, it's a number that got, was able to garner majority support.
Okay.
And that's really...
It's subjective, good is subjective.
Well, this is a point that was made, it annoyed people equally.
Oh, yeah, I remember.
Anything else, Beth?
No, I think you just said what I was going to say, because that's, if I vote to support this, that is not what I'm saying, that it's fair and accurate. I'm saying it's a starting point, because it's not, and that's the tough part for me.
It is a starting point. It allows our community to come together and have a conversation about it. It says that the board has felt like this number that was so, this formula was so supported by the community five years ago, that we'd like to move forward with that, but it doesn't mean that it won't change.
We're doubling down on the winning hand.
Right, right, basically what you're saying.
But I think the important piece of this is, and I don't, because I don't want to go in and say, we just kind of want to throw something out there that will allow us to go to a special meeting. It's the point Tom made very well, which is, this is the formula that was the result of a year's worth of work. Was it here? And it was supported by the community, and we really don't have a change in demographics or economics or EV or anything that would disrupt these other two facts.
Would affect the formula.
Yes, but it is the whole story. And I, you said this, and I think we've lost sight of this, by talking about, well, we'll have a conversation, we'll have all this, this is it. We had a year's worth of work, and I think we've decided, we don't want to repeat that year's worth of work now, because nothing has changed to justify putting a dozen of our community members through that, and our administration, through that year's worth of work. So this is what I think we have to start with the story, and this is an important part of the story, is there was a year-long study done and countless hours put into that.
May I make one request?
Sure.
Would the board be willing to accept public input on this topic at this moment?
I would not have a problem with that. Yeah, I would be fine to accept...
Are you interested, Brian?
I am.
Thank you, Tom.
I'll be brief, and I thank you, because this is definitely a privilege to be allowed to provide input on this.
Excellent, can you just state your name?
Oh, thank you. My name's Brian Rader, I'm from Brookline, and I'm also a member of the co-op budget committee. I'm in the Brookline Finance Committee. I think an important thing to understand, I think it's difficult for us to put ourselves in each other's shoes for this. I think it's important to understand that if we think about ourselves as a single community, rather than two towns, if we thought of ourselves as a single community, we have a situation where about 40% of our residents live in one part of that community, in Brookline, and under the current apportionment formula, those 40% of the residents are paying about 47% of the expenses of the co-op. That 40% of the residents there, they don't have the benefits of a large business base that the other town has. Their median age is younger and their median income is less. So the tax burden felt on individual families is significantly more in that population than it is in the other population. That's the thing that's difficult to express in these numbers. That's why I think some of us are concerned with the apportionment formula, the way it has developed over the years.
Thank you, Brian. Thanks, Brian. Yes, Liz?
I can't stay quiet. So, one, number one, I want to correct a misstatement. If you look at New Hampshire demographics, the median income as of 2017 of Brookline is actually higher than that of Hollis. Brookline's median income is 127,222. Hollis is slightly less than that, at 126,379. And that fact that keeps getting floated out there, which is a misstatement, is, I just think it's important to make sure that people understand that it is different. And then the other factor is, I think we have to look at, and this is why I don't want to have this conversation, I think in this particular setting, and I would, you know, is when you look at the cost per pupil or the amount that Brookline and Hollis pays per child that they send to the co-op schools, it's costing Brookline about $2,000 less per student than a Hollis child that's coming to the co-op. So you've got to look at all the facts, which is why we spent a year in committee talking about all these facts. And so we can't, you know, it's difficult when you start cherry-picking any particular set of facts. So this is where I go back, that whole thing I did. This year, work that was done five years ago was really valuable work, and I don't think we, this community has, this board and our budget committee has the appetite to relive that years-long process right now. And if we don't, we need to give this thing a shot.
More importantly, even if we were to redo it again, I don't think the outcome would be substantially different, because, and I'm a Brookline resident, and I know what I would like to see happen on a personal level for personal gain, but I also know that if Brookline, I mean, if you look at, there's arguments on both sides, and we don't want to open those up. So I am appreciative of Brian voicing his opinion and the participation that he's had, because these are necessary things we need to keep in mind. But with those things in mind, I think the outcome and the place we're at is still probably, in my opinion, is still the most likely candidate for continued support.
I appreciate that, Tom. Anything else? Okay, so let me just ask a little, like, logistics question. So when we make this motion, do I need to read this whole warrant article? Or am I making a motion to just accept the recommendation by the budget committee?
You could do the accept the recommendation by the budget committee, and then perhaps as worded by legal counsel? As worded by legal counsel, and then we'll have Don incorporate it into the minutes.
Great. So I need a motion to recommend amending the apportionment formula as recommended by the budget committee and referenced in legal counsel, by legal counsel. That's all I need to say? Good. Anyone want to make a motion? Tom, second? Cindy? We've already had the discussion, is there any other additional discussion now that we're having on the table?
What does this trigger for next steps if the vote is in the affirmative?
In the legal counsel's packet, the next thing we would do is look at a date. He suggested the end of January, because that would start us down the road of, he would then have the warrant looked at by the Department of Revenue to make sure that they agree with the wording. That wording would come back to us again, that would be the wording we'd use at a public hearing. And then after the public hearing, the board would then inform that to go to the warrant, and then take it to the special meeting.
How quickly could we get the DRA input so that if there is a problem, we would know about it?
Right.
I mean, it'd be relatively quick, and this is a slower time for them right now, because tax bills...
Let me rephrase the question. Would we know in time to make adjustments in December if need be?
Yes. Yeah, I can't imagine we wouldn't.
Any other comments? This vote is not about the date, it's just about the formula, right? Okay. Okay. About the wording. All those in favor? Opposed? Six, one. Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, thank you all for that, is a non-public. I need to find the motion.
Are we going to discuss a date? I mean, do we need to get a date as soon as possible?
So the date was in the packet, and I believe it was January 28th was the date for the special meeting?
Right, we may need to adjust...
I'm going to say we may need to adjust it, that's why I opened it up for discussion.
And the only reason I say we may need to adjust it is because December 11th would have been the deadline to take the next vote, if I have the...
I have to pull it up, I'm sorry, I don't have it. Do you have the...
December 11th, again, I have to wait.
I actually have another handout, too. Just turn that down.
My password, I can't bring it.
Rick, the other thing is the facility.
What I just handed out was, I had told Jim of the conflict of February 4th, because we are at a meeting in Brookline already that night. So he looked back and he said, it took January 28th, and he can adjust it to whatever date you're advising, but you would have to hold a special meeting of the warrant article, all right, amendment to the article's agreement before the 12th of December. And now that we have a warrant, I can go back to Jim and get the timeline looked at. Then we'd post a public hearing. If we went with January 28th, the public hearing would be January 10th. The last day to post a warrant with the warrant article would be on the 13th, publish in the paper on the 17th, provide copy attested to the certified warrant to the clerk on the 16th, and then the special meeting with a snow date of the 30th. Now, the 11th is actually the date of our next school board meeting, so my suggestion would be, we could probably use all the dates if we just said it was going to be the 30th, and do a snow date in early February.
Not the 30th.
No.
30 is Thursday.
Oh, Tom.
I'm with Tom, do it the next week.
I think we'd need to have that other calendar in front of us, too, though, right?
Yes, which is in your packet.
Where, where, where?
Tell me if that's...
Is that it?
But that's only this town.
No, no, no. No, that has, that has Brookline, too, no? It has Brookline State.
If they vote tonight, they meet that requirement.
But in January, we're not even dealing with a lot of stuff.
I mean, if you vote tonight for a date, then you've met before, twelve-eleven, two thousand and nineteen, the board vote to hold a special meeting and approve warrant article proposing amendment. You've approved a warrant article tonight in the wording.
In the wording, right.
It'll get vetted like we always do. And you'd be setting a date tonight.
What didn't you like about the twenty-eighth?
I have no problem with the twenty-eighth, it was just more that this vote would, tonight would count for the vote to post a meeting. That's why, to Cindy's point, we'd want to make a motion and take a vote on a date.
Like, we haven't voted to hold a special meeting. We voted on a proposed...
So, you're saying if we didn't vote until the eleventh, then it would be too late to do the twenty-eighth?
Correct, correct.
Right, and the problem is if we have a snow date or something, can't get a quorum.
So, if you approve the twenty-eighth and the thirtieth, then you've approved the special meeting, you've approved the warrant tonight, so we've done it before the twelfth, the eleventh of December.
Well, the other, what is the public hearing? Is that just...
The public hearing is we come, we read the warrant article, we take public input, we get all the feedback from the public, and then we close it down.
Is the...
The tenth is a Friday.
The tenth is a Friday, so is that date predetermined by the twenty-eighth or is it just has to be fourteen days in advance, right? So, could it be the ninth? Or do you have other things?
Could we do it on the same day as our meeting?
Not later than twenty-five days before the meeting.
Right. If you...
The public hearing's on a Friday. What's wrong with the... Oh, stop. I can't, we can't wait all Thursdays.
Why not?
I think if you select the twenty-eighth tonight, then I can go back and give Jim the dates. I don't think it's going to be a problem, but I don't want to say it's absolutely not.
Right.
So, you want to vote on a date?
I think it'd be safer if we vote on a date.
I think it's safer to pick a date.
I guess we can, if we vote on a date and it falls apart, can we take a vote on a new date, on the eleventh?
Yes, but you just have to change all your timelines again.
Right, I gotcha, I don't want to have to do that.
And picking the twenty-eighth still gives wiggle room for the in-between dates.
Yes, it does.
It's a plus or minus.
Right, okay.
Right, I think the big thing is you want, as Jim says in his advice, is to pick the meeting date and then we can set up all the other pieces because you may be able to have a public hearing on the ninth as opposed to the tenth.
Or the eighth.
The eighth.
Why do we want one on the eighth?
Actually, no, it...
The tenth is a Friday.
It would have to be later because it has to be no more than...
No more than...
So, it might be the following week.
Okay.
Right.
Just be careful of Tuesdays in January because the primary, presidential primaries can move on you.
I think it'll be the twenty... That's a good point.
They picked one? They picked a date or is it still tentative?
They haven't picked a date, yeah.
Right, still tentative, yep.
Okay, so would you like a...
I mean, would, can we have a...
Motion to pick the twenty-eighth date, the date of the twenty-eighth?
You could.
I'm sorry.
Do you want a motion to set the date of...
Yes, I do.
So, I move to set the date for the special meeting on apportionment, apportionment vote for January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, to start at...
We typically do six-thirty.
I don't think we have to, I don't think we have to set the time, I just have something to say.
For big things, we usually do seven, but...
Well, we moved, but if you remember, we moved annual meeting up to half hour to six-thirty because we're just trying to get people out before the wee hours.
Get all the rules and stuff.
Okay. January twenty-eighth.
And could you put in your motion?
Second.
A snow date of the thirtieth?
You have to say it.
I mean, I need a snow date, that's all I'm saying.
So, you want it to snow on the thirtieth, is that what you're saying? The snow date of January thirtieth.
So does Tom, and that's what made me...
Yeah, okay.
And Krista seconded that?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on that date? Okay, all in favor? Okay, seven-zero. Okay, great, now we need to go into, is there anything else?
No.
Let's go to, we need to go into non-public, I have to find them.
Non-process observer, observation?
Well, first, are we going to do process observer and then go into non-public?
Well, if we're not going to be coming out...
Okay, so why don't we do process observer first? I'm just going to change this.
Well, first and foremost, we kept to a very good schedule even with all the disruptions.
What disruptions? There wasn't any disruptions. Nobody came in.
Well, I say disruptions, movement, juggling, which creates... And I applaud you on the policy work because you got us through that real quickly.
Thank you.
No, it's a, it's a big deal getting through policy without becoming a driving force to the schedule. And I thank people for contributing. I thought that this was a pretty well-balanced meeting, so all in all, I think it was very productive. I'm glad we're keeping the kids' stuff in focus and that's a good, that's a good part of it.
Good job. Okay, so, which one are we going by? Just read the whole thing, please?
I don't know.
Reputations.
So, C. Okay, so I need a motion that the board by roll call go into non-public session pursuant to RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two, Roman numeral, part C, to discuss a matter which if discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of a person other than a member of the body or agency itself. So, moved by Tom.
Second.
Seconded by Melanie. Roll call, starting with Melanie.
Melanie, aye.
Aye. Beth, aye.
Tom, aye.
Holly, aye.
Krista, aye. Cindy, aye.
Okay.
Holly, you what?
I what?
Eight thirty-seven.
And eight thirty-seven, great.